Days of blowing snow.
What are you gonna blow?
I can't say.
Sand, blow sand.
All the leaves that were buried in the snow.
There you go, there you go.
All my neighbors' leaves that were buried in the snow.
Yeah, that's true.
So Mark, did you get the email that I sent?
No.
How about Mike? Did Mike, did you get the email I sent?
Me? No, no, you sent an email?
I did, um, from, uh, Mark Miller. I'll have to try sending it again.
Nope, don't have one.
Alright.
Hi Nancy.
Hi, how are ya?
Good.
I'm good.
Good. Mike, how you doing?
I'm, I'm here.
It's been a crazy day.
Been a day guys.
It's been a day.
Hey Mike, I told Zach what that word we were trying to figure was. It was a containment site.
Well, yep.
Well, are we ready to go? Mike, are you all set?
Yeah, we're ready to go, recording, so I think everybody's here. Are you good?
Everybody, uh, ready?
Ready.
Ready.
Okay.
Ready.
Welcome to, uh, Thursday, March eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one, City of Manistee Planning Commission, Special Meeting, Please Rise for the Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic, which stands one nation, one nation under God, indivisible, justiciable, Please take role Nancy.
So, before we run into role, I wanna, I wanna remind everyone, um, as, as you take role, state your, your name and your location, the city and the state as well.
You want the address Zach?
Uh.
No.
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 That's okay, city and state.
Alright.
Okay. Commissioner Slawinski?
Here, Manistee, Michigan.
Commissioner Samansky?
Yes, Michael Shemansky, Manistee, Michigan.
Commissioner Mimberto?
Here, Manistee, Michigan.
Commissioner Weiner?
Here, Manistee, Michigan.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes, Manistee, Michigan.
Commissioner Yoder?
Here, Manistee, Michigan.
Chair Whitliff?
Here, Manistee, Michigan. Thank you. Approval agenda, at this time, the planning commission can take action to approve the March eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one agenda. Is there a motion?
A motion to approve.
Motion by Bob.
Second, by Samansky.
Discussion? None, please take role.
Commissioner Slawinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Samiansky?
Yes.
Commissioner Mimberto?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Chair Whitliff.
Yes, thank you. Approval of minutes, at this time, the planning commission can approve the March fourth, two thousand twenty-one minutes. Is there a motion?
Manistee, I'll make the motion.
Motion by Mick?
Mimberto made it.
Oh, Shelley, second by Mick. I missed Shelley, so I'm sorry.
Sorry, I use my mom voice.
Discussion? None, please take role.
Commissioner Slawinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Samansky?
Yes.
Commissioner Mimberto?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Chair Whitliff.
Yes, thank you. Public hearings, we have one marijuana overlay, or, excuse me, marijuana grow overlay district text amendment. I'll hand it over.
Sorry about that. So for this one here, this is, uh, a proposed text amendment that would, um, eliminate section two thousand four of the zoning ordinance, um, is, is listed under mixed use and dwellings. So the proposed idea being that it eliminates this language allowing for residential areas to be within the marijuana overlay district. Outside of that, I guess I'll take any questions.
Did I have a question there?
Go ahead Roger.
Uh, weren't we a little more specific than just opening up the residential? I mean.
So, so in the zoning ordinance, it would still require that they, if, that they would need a special use permit? And then within that, you would be allowed to make more stipulations if you wanted to add something that would say, perhaps that the, um, resident has to work at the, at their location?
Right.
Or, you know, if you wanted to be, you know, more restrictive, you could be more strict, restrictive, but as it stands now, it's not allowed, period.
Right, right. Well, I thought we would discuss that our last meeting, that it was the person that was managing the business was allowed to live upstairs and no one else.
So that, for that particular case, so this kind of opens the door for that to even be on the table.
Right.
So, you're still on a case-by-case basis, but it, it allows you to even have the conversation to begin with.
Yeah. Yeah.
Is there a number of, uh, permits that we give out for the marijuana? Are we giving out only so many?
So Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, the number there is a five? I can't hear you.
Bring your volume up.
Very low.
He's still there?
Yeah.
Right, he's, he's working through the kinks. Okay.
Did he freeze on us?
No, no.
Nothing was moving.
I was gonna say, it, it went into paralysis.
Alright, well I'm gonna swing around here and see if you guys can hear me better. Can you hear me better now?
Yes.
Yeah.
Alright, sorry about that. I don't know why it's being finicky today after it's worked so well. Um, so you guys could potentially in that marijuana district have, uh, it's not a licensing, there's only five licenses given out for retail, but for, um, the special uses within there, or just for the parcels in general for residential district, um, it's, it's technically by a parcel-by-parcel basis. Now, if there's marijuana on there, um, within the service overlay district, you know, it's definitely not allowed. Um, but what Zach is trying to, um, say is, uh, you know, this would open the door for, for allowing it, however, stipulations can be put on this as far as, uh, you know, that they do have to live there or be part of the business, uh, you can't short-term rent it. Um, you know, but that would take additional definitions as well, because short-term rentals are not defined within the, the zoning ordinance currently. So, um, there, this is a bit of an upscale, uphill climb a little bit, but, um, it does open for that possibility, so, uh, as well as, um, if you guys wanted to make them put that into any kind of like other restrictions as well, and as Zach's saying, it's, it's coming in as a mixed use, which would be, um, as part of a special use, so stipulations can either be made as part of, um, the time when they apply for a marijuana, uh, permit and mixed use with residential, um, or if they amend their current one, or, uh, as, as a part of just the regular regulation that you guys decide to put in, um, as part of, within that district. So there's a, a variety of ways to do this. Um, I think Zach is, is saying that he prefers the way that you guys, um, apply the stipulations as part of the special use permit as opposed to putting, um, additional regulation within that overlay district itself. So, um, it would be on you guys to, uh, say that, you know, as a stipulation of allowing a residential structure within this area as part of a mixed use development, that you would need to, um, make it a stipulation that they can't short-term run it and that the person has to live there. Aside from that, you would not have, um, those built in. Now, if you wanted them built in, we'd have to relook at language and adjusting that, but, um, you know, that, that's, this is just starting that process guys, and, and those discussions can have, I mean, at a later time, but, you know, I'll let Zach talk more about it, so.
Yeah, did that answer your question Roger?
Yeah, that answers my question. The only, uh, well, concern I have is if we're older up the residential, that kind of defeats the purpose of where we put them, because that was supposed to be non-residential. I mean, you know what I'm following? So I, I don't, yeah, that's my feeling, that's all. If they, as long as they work in a business, I could see them living upstairs or in the building. But just to open it up to residential, I couldn't see it.
Right. This doesn't necessarily allow for that. This, this still means that when they come in with that special use permit, they have to say, where, we want residential in here as well, and that's when you guys would be allowed to make your stipulations saying, whatever it might be, that they have to work there, or.
Yeah.
It is.
And, and without, without knowing the entirety of the history behind this, um, because this district was, uh, put in place prior to either one of us, uh, joining the, the planning, uh, department, so, um, what Zach is doing is, you know, we did receive a request to do that. Um, you guys were canvassed as a board, um, back in February, uh, and they moved forward with it, um, after, after that conversation. Um, but, you know, it, absolutely, this is not something that you guys may, um, or have to do anything with. You, you know, if you feel that, that was relayed out a certain way, then it was laid out a certain way, but, um, at the same time, yes, this does open the door for, uh, the ability to request that, so.
Yeah. My, my only comment is that I would, you know, again, in the special use permit, I would restrict it only to management, uh, living on premises. I, I would, I would make it, very difficult for anyone other than, uh, manager, assistant manager, uh, grow supervisor, uh, to have the opportunity to live on premise. Ju- just for a, a number of reasons, and I would, I would think that, you know, I, I get it that they have an opportunity in this one facility, but, uh, I still have some concerns, uh, you know, again, you know, you're living, uh, you know, it's kind of like, you know, having, uh, uh, an apartment above the bank. Right, you know, you got a lot of resources, uh, in that same building, and a lot of opportunities for, you know, problems. But, but that would be up to the owner, um, so.
What are the feel, what are the feelings up from the commission?
Um, I, I thought that we discussed it pretty fairly thoroughly, um, and it, you know, in this particular instance, if this is the way to open the door to let that business move forward with, um, giving, you know, or renting that apartment that they created above for that manager to move in, um, then I, I would suggest we move forward with this one. If, if, if it's a case-by-case basis, we can evaluate each and every one, but we, I mean, this has, there has to be a starting point.
Okay.
Yeah, we've got to have, uh, like, stick it with, still stay with the case-by-case, because there may be other cases that they just want to throw out there that don't make sense, so we can act with stipulations, prevent some of those.
It's always a, a possibility as well, if, if, um, uh, you know, you know, obviously, this is a public hearing portion of this, and, you know, that we, we still want to allow others to speak, but, um, the planning commission, it, it's important that you guys review the, you can approve, deny, approve with stipulations, or table this text amendment request. Um, that's a very important factor of this, so if, um, during the decision-making process, if you guys either want more information, or if you would like to see, um, language developed, that is also something that can be done, um, in tabling this decision for a later date. However, uh, you know, it's important to note that fact, um, and, you know, but we are only in the public hearing portion of this, so I will give that back, so.
Ask another question, um, if, if we were to table it not move forward, the, I know that this isn't anybody in the room's fault, but, um, I know that that business probably would suffer a little bit if they can't, that, that lady came from out of town, right? So.
Yeah.
My assumption she doesn't have anywhere else to live.
And, and I think she, she's here with us too, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, I am.
Hi.
Hi, everybody.
So, any thoughts?
I'm just, I'm really not, uh, I'm a kind of opposed to, uh, to putting anything like this in a residential area unless it's as away from like schools and, you know, the more distance from other housing and stuff. I thought that's why we kept everything on thirty-one there.
And aren't the townhouses right across the street? Ye- yes, but they're.
Those are.
Yeah, it's, it's, the underlying district is a C-two district in, in that, on that overlay.
Pam?
Well, you know, you know, when we were setting up this district, we talked about this for quite a bit, about having residences there, and we agreed not to do it for multiple reasons, and I think that was pretty sound decision, and I'm gonna stick by that one. I, I understand, I know what it's like to move into this area and try to find a place to live, I've done it, it's hard. That was eleven years ago, it hasn't gotten any better. Matter of fact, it's gotten worse, but I really don't think it's a good idea to have residences associated with the marijuana facilities at all. That's just my personal opinion. I'm, I'm gonna stick by our original decision to not have residences there, because I think that's the best plan. And I, I, I do feel for her. I, you know, being a realtor, I know the situation here in town better than anybody, but I, I just, I think it's opening up a can of worms that we'll be sorry for later on.
Can I ask why you, what, what, basically what it is that you're worried about with people living near cannabis?
When we were setting up this district, we were talking about the, it's not just so much you being the employee, it would be people that would come visiting, any children that might be visiting, you know, there's no control that, that, that your employer would have, because, basically because he can't control who you have in the apartment. You know, I, I, I don't think he can step on your personal rights that way, but it's just, there's just, I just feel like there's some liability issues there that, that would cause problems.
Yeah, alright, thanks Pam.
Yep.
Alright, um, Mark, don't forget about the public, the comment portion of the public hearing.
Yep.
Right. Well, right, that's the next one.
Yeah, decisions shouldn't necessarily be, be made.
Right, without public hearing.
Yeah. Wasn't a decision, it was just my opinion.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
Yep.
Any other discussion from the members? None? Okay. What we'll do is close the public hearing.
No, no.
Hold on.
Don't, don't close the public hearing, you have to have public comment during the public.
So, alright. Public comment on agenda-related items.
It, it is, it is miss Mark there, and I, it should just be public comment during the public hearing.
Okay, so we are open to public comment.
Alright, if you would like to make a public comment, please hit star nine and raise your hand, um, and then, uh, the chair can recognize that person. We don't, we don't have any hands raised, so I'll ask again, Mark. If you'd like to make a public comment, hit star nine or raise your hand if you're joining us, uh, via Zoom, or if you can't figure it out, just unmute yourself and, and speak up, identify yourself, please.
Um, yeah, sorry, I couldn't figure out what you were asking. Um, my name is Diane Brown, I'm the general manager of the dispensary that is in question, um, at seventy-four Arthur Street. Um, I guess, uh, I kind of wanted to discuss a little bit more about, um, the safety issues that Pamela brought up. Um, I've worked in cannabis for a long time, and I've also was an instructor at Lansing Community College, I was on the advisory board for Lara, the state of Michigan, um, to help discover, or to help develop the rules for the provisioning center, um, and how we process things, how we function, basically what makes us safe, and, um, throughout that whole time, um, I've never felt threatened or unsafe, um, so to me, this industry is safer than, say, the alcohol, like a bar. Um, there's residents above bars, they're open much later than we are, um, we have security cameras, my apartment will have security cameras. I just can't install them yet, because we can't legally live there. Um, but yeah, I mean, to me, it's, it's safer than most residents in town, so, um, I don't know, if you have any questions about the safety precautions that we, that we have in place, or anything about that, then I'd be happy to discuss that with you as well. Um, there's no access from one location to the other. Um, yeah, I mean, it, it couldn't really be any safer, um, so, I don't know, do you guys have any questions? That I could answer that would help?
So, did I hear you correctly, Mike? Um.
Go ahead.
You, you cannot access directly into the business from the apartment or the other way around?
Correct. Right, they're both, they are completely unaccessible from each other. You have to go to a whole separate entrance.
And I assume, at least for employees, there's a process to get in and out of those entrances?
Correct, correct, yeah, the, the main entrance, um, for employees is, uh, in the front of the building, and the entrance to the apartment is around to the backside of the building.
And I just, I just wanted to remind everyone that this isn't approving Diane's situation. This is, this is approving the text amendment, or, that the proposed text amendment that would allow that for her to come with, come with, to you with her special use permit, which you would then get to look at, have stipulations if you wanted, that sort of thing, but what we're looking at tonight is the, is the text amendment itself.
And also, um, just the text amendment itself, just talking about that, um, as Pamela had mentioned, um, and I think Shelley had mentioned in the previous meeting, um, about the difficulties of finding, um, finding a place to live in Manistee. Um, I moved up in, I moved up here in September, and the short-term rental, um, it's, it's a problem. I know there was a whole study that Manistee did on it. Um, Shelley said at the last meeting that it's brought up at every meeting that you guys have, the, the limited housing. Um, currently, I'm living in Oneakama, um, at a short-term rental, paying more than I should, um, in a house that's, uh, not actually that great of a house. We share it with a lot of mice, um. So yeah, it's, it's a little bit difficult, it's a bit frustrating, um, to not be able to easily find a place to live in Manistee, uh, especially when over half of my employees don't live in Manistee. Um, so, yeah, if we could do something to increase the availability of housing, it would be great.
Okay, thank you. Any others? Any other comment? Roger?
Question, that, uh, Zach, do we, if we deal with this Diane Brown situation, do we deal with that specifically, or are we gonna open a can of worms for the next phase?
So, tonight, you're approving the text amendment that would bring her special use permit to you guys, and that, that would be essentially a case-by-case basis. As, as it stands now, it's not allowed, period, they can't even come and talk to you about it.
It would open it up for the entire district though, correct Zach?
It would open it up for the entire district, but they would still have to come in on the special use.
Okay, so, I got a question. Can we, could we change the, the board, uh, instead of just being as carte blanche? Could we say that, um, residence in the overlay district is only on a case-by-case basis to be brought up to the planning commission? Could we, could we create words, you know, and make it more specific that it is, it is only allowed, uh, on a case-by-case basis, uh, as determined by the planning commission?
You, you could, but I, I do not recommend that. Um, I, you, you would want to put, uh, either certain stipulations in, um, in developed language, but not a case-by-case basis, because that's essentially what the special use permit does.
Okay.
You, you don't want to, uh, that would, in my opinion, leave you open for a, a legal action against you if, if you said, uh, if somebody got it for a case-by-case basis and it wasn't, you weren't, um, how am I trying to say this, uh?
Distant, it might be discriminatory.
Right.
Yeah.
It could be perceived that way. So you open it up for the district with certain regulations on it, um, if that was the route you wanted to take. For instance, uh, mixed-use developments in marijuana areas can only be utilized by, um, the workers of that, you know, live-work type field, but that would be language we could develop outside of, um, you know, outside of this, of just granting this blanket, you know, passing right now. We would have to come back after that language is developed.
Okay, could it, could it actually be more specific and say only, you know, in management of the grow, uh, or the, uh, retail or marijuana business? And, and not limited to just an employee, but only management?
You, you could, but you would have to define what management is, so you're, you're looking at very much amending the, the ordinance, um, outside of a, outside of a text amendment of, of just omitting something, um. And, you know, you know the process that that is, so, um, you know, we just went through it with the city council and that, and the two readings, and, um, so, uh, if we're developing initial languages, this process will go on much longer, but if that is what you desire, that is.
So we could define manager of the facility or assistant manager, and, and maybe just cut it off at that?
I'm, yeah, I mean, we could define these things, but anything that, if we were developing language, I, I do not recommend doing it on the fly.
Okay.
I recommend we, we ensure that we develop proper language that, uh, if you guys do wish to, you know, uh, change this, that we do it through a different process.
Well, we're probably saying, we probably need to bring George in to come help us on the legal end of it.
To, we, we do run every text amendment by the city attorney, yes.
Yeah, I, I'm beginning to lean more towards, uh, Pam, uh, that, you know, again, we're opening up something that, that has so many, uh, possibilities to go south for us, uh, to, a- and again, I, I know, you know, again, we have a very reliable person with Ms. Brown, but we just can't, you know, look into the crystal ball and see what other o- opportunities are for, uh, someone else to, uh, uh, take advantage of us loosening the restrictions that we currently have.
Okay.
So don't, don't you think that's slightly discriminatory against cannabis people that work in cannabis, because you're kind of implying that somebody else who gets hired at a cannabis company might not be as, um, morally sound as me, I guess, is kind of what, what I'm hearing?
Well, a- again, what I'm saying is that, you know, you've made a, a very good case for yourself, uh, but that, like I said, if we're going to be, you know, open for, um, people, we're not gonna have an opportunity to screen, uh, who. people, we're not going to have an opportunity to screen who's moving into the facility. And and that's my concern is, you know, again, we could you know, have problems. And, and again, we just didn't want it to be a residential area. We were literally, that was kind of the idea and it's kind of difficult to, to make exceptions and then live with the aftermath.
So I just, I just wanted to kind of clear up as well here. When, when I went about this and brought this forward, my, my thinking was that by omitting this, it brings it to that special use category. So in a way, you are going almost by a case-by-case basis where you're evaluating, is this an appropriate for this, for this parcel, for this special use? So you're, you're stepping into that realm already without the procedure of defining what a manager is necessarily. You could absolutely do that on your special use permit stipulations, but it's not a, it's not hard, as hard and cold as it is in the zoning ordinance.
Wouldn't, wouldn't, Zach, wouldn't other applicants, if, if this, if this went through, this was granted as a special use? I guess, pile of hardship?
So when you allow it in the zoning ordinance and it's, it's a stipulation, so you would, you would look at the case and say, okay, well, maybe, maybe they can access it and that's something we would want to change. Or it's a manager, you want to put a stipulation, how, how do we know they're still working there? Things like that. I guess outside of that, I would have to refer to George for, for the rest of your
Who, who is going to police it?
And then even, then we open ourselves up to liability if we, we make a special use and authorize it in one facility and then the next person says, well, you know, I want to build a three-story and employ all of my, my workers. How do we say no to the next one that comes through without having problems with the?
So, so if I can kind of have the chair ring, we're, we are still in public comment.
Yep, got it.
I guess I'm not really sure what, what would be so bad about there being three more apartments available at Manistee just because they're associated with a cannabis company. I understand that you guys are nervous or hesitant about cannabis because it's new to Manistee, but it's not new to a lot of us and it's not scary. The incidences of breaking into dispensaries and all of that stuff, I, I guess I'm just not sure what you guys are so afraid of with it. Because it's, it's a very safe industry. The managers, even every person who works in this industry has to go through a background check. That's very thorough. We can't have anything on our record, so every one of us is, is made, we're made sure that we're good people. You know, I, I guess it's, it's a little, it's a little insulting, it feels like to me.
Well, you know, part of this is when we, when we were first establishing the overlay district, we established it as a non-residential area.
Right, I understand that, but I don't understand why, I guess. I guess it's, it's not as scary to me, residents, I mean, people have it all the time in their homes. People grow in their homes. It's legal for people to grow it. You know, I guess, I guess I'm just confused why people shouldn't be living near it.
I feel when you grow it in your home and stuff, it's for your own personal use. But when you're running it as a business, you're bringing all kinds of other people in and out the business and that, and I just don't feel it's fit for a residential area. We've allotted the whole thirty-one there to put all of it in and I'm just not for putting it in a residential area.
Sure, I can understand that, but if someone is growing in their own home, even if they just grow one plant, that one plant can produce over a pound of marijuana. One person isn't going to use a pound of marijuana, so they're obviously giving that people to other, they're either a caregiver and they're providing that to other people, or other people are coming and purchasing that from them. So I mean, to me, someone growing in their home, people get broken into their home more often than dispensaries do.
We can see it on both sides of the fence. We wanted to keep, as Mick said, we wanted to keep it in a, the residential out of that commercial end.
Guys, just one more question here. For, for the play devil's advocate a lot on these things. So for State River Street, we have buildings that are clearly live-work. Do we or the city determine which businesses are able to go into some of those buildings as far as leases? Because there are people potentially living upstairs.
No, but we establish the district and allow or not allow for residents in that district. So we just made an amendment expanding on residences in the downtown district to expand it.
Because I wasn't part of the original conversation, so I
Theoretically, we could, you could, you could have said, you know, that there is no residential apartments authorized in the, in the downtown district. That could be done by ordinance. You know, as it was, they were only allowed on the second floor up until last Tuesday.
I just wanted to, to make sure that anyone else in the public had, had their chance to speak as well. So if anyone else has something to say, be a great time to raise your hand.
Or just unmute?
Anyone else? Anyone else? No other comments? This time we can close the public hearing. And move on to public comment on agenda-related items. There's anyone that would like to comment on the agenda only? Please raise your hand, name and address, please, and you have up to three minutes. There's anyone?
Hi, this is John and Barb. Zach would be, is this the time for us to speak or?
This is, Mr. Ham, I am, this is on agenda-related items.
I would have you hold on there, John.
Thank you.
Okay, who is, who is, wants to speak? No one? New business? New business would be the public hearing, right Mike?
Yes, it should be. It should have been on there. It's new business and then the marijuana grow overlay to discuss. And if with the approve, deny, or approve with stipulation.
All right, so we'll open it up for discussion between only the commissioners. Anyone?
Yeah, I have one question. It's procedural. So if we were to approve the request, that just moves it to different status for actually to put language together, right? There's, we're not saying tonight, yes, go ahead and move in. There could still be a denial at some point later, right? If we can't agree on language or
But the way I understand is we have to put the text saying that residential there before we can proceed with any other amendments to it. Because you've got to reverse something first before you can add the new stuff to it. You can't just jump into a new stuff without reversing something that was there before.
So, so what we're deciding tonight is whether to omit this one thing about the dwelling shall not be permitted in the same building slash structure of the marijuana business. We're just deciding to whether omit that or change it with stipulations, right?
Right, that's, that's really what you guys are doing tonight, so you could, really, it's, it's approved. Really, a motion should be made and then a discussion had and then a vote. So somebody would have to make a motion to either approve, deny, approve with stipulations. You guys could also move to table this and move it into old business for another meeting, for this decision pending whatever.
Right, get into the, the the teeth of it, right Mike?
Right, but to, to, in order to proceed with discussion, a motion would need to be made on this.
To tape, to approve, deny, or approve with stipulations, deny or move.
Right, so a motion would have to be made to that effect, then discussion had, and then a vote. So just to, to be clear, just because a motion is made towards whatever or you can make a motion to table this, you know, pending further information. But in order to discuss a motion in a second, discussion would take place. And then a vote. Now, just because you, you move to, let's say you move to deny or approve, it does not necessarily mean you are voting that way. You are just trying to move into discussion.
So that is a motion to approve, a motion to, with stipulations, a motion to deny, or a motion to table?
I'll make a motion to approve with stipulation.
Okay, is there a second on this?
I'll say, I'll second.
Discussion? Any discussion with this?
If we, if, if we vote to omit this and do it with stipulations, how are we to make sure that companies know that they have to get a special use permit to put an apartment in?
I think that would be an additional motion we have to make after this for something to follow. All we're doing is trying to change the text and we should be making another condition for the applications.
Zach, on this, the, the omitting of that makes it a mixed use within it, within that overlay district, which requires a special use permit, correct?
That is correct.
So if you omit it, it comes in as a mixed use. Right now, it just does not allow residential uses.
I, I misspoke there, I'm sorry. The mixed use is a permitted use, but to have a marijuana operation in this, on the location requires a special use. So it's indirectly, it would need a special use. I'm sorry to throw more mud in there, but
The way I understand it is if it's not in a marijuana use, it can still be a mixed use. But if it is for marijuana, it has to follow all the specifications that we put on it for a special use permit. Kind of the gist of it?
You're gonna have to relay that back to me.
Okay, we've got places that don't have any marijuana permits on. Okay, that would still fall under the mixed use, correct?
And mixed use is an allowable, is a permitted use.
Okay, and the marijuana is a special use permit?
Correct.
Which would be a case-by-case, by parcel, a parcel. So the stipulations would come in on those parcels by parcel.
Correct, because, because if it has anything to do with marijuana, it has a special use on it.
So it's, it's possible that if we omit this, then someone could use like the old police, the, the old state police building or the dog groomers and put residences in there without a special use permit.
No, that is already allowable. If it, as long as it doesn't have marijuana in there.
As long as it, it's already allowable.
Yes.
Zach, are you, can you, can you double check that?
I'm, I'm looking at it right now. So mixed use is a permitted use in the C one district.
Right.
That's the underlying district. The, the verbiage here is that the dwelling shall not be permitted in the same building structure as a marijuana business.
Okay, just, I would just wanted to verify because I, I haven't reviewed it in a while, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I clarify and make sure I understood? So if, if somebody were to buy the state police building and not use it for marijuana, they could turn it into residences?
That's correct. Is, as long as it's a mixed use.
Okay. Meaning residences in some sort of business.
A different kind, or a different kind of
A different kind of business.
Zach, within that district, are duplexes allowed already?
So multiple-unit dwellings require a special use. And this is one of those weird ones where the, the, the mixed use is treated as a special use often. Duplex. Catch, catch up here on the sub headers there. So that's that's different, okay. The mixed use is a permitted use. Multiple-unit dwellings are considered a special use. So if somebody came in with a mixed-use development where they wanted residence and say a commercial outside of marijuana, as the, as the ordinance reads, that is allowable. That is permitted use. If they wanted just to be a multiple-unit dwelling, that requires a special use.
So, so a mixed use would just go in. They would just apply for a land use permit if they met setback requirements. They would be allowed to outside of marijuana is what Zach's saying. Multiple unit requires a special use permit as well, which comes before you. But a mixed-use development outside of marijuana would just be a permitted use within that overlay district.
Okay, so then it really is just the cannabis industry that it, it sounds like you don't want residences near or that this body agreed to.
So as, as the, as the ordinance reads in section two thousand four mixed use in dwellings, dwellings shall not be permitted in the same building slash structure as a marijuana business. That's the text amendment that is proposed to be omitted.
So they would just, what he said is they just remove that, that stipulation, so and then it would just be the, the regular under, underlying uses, which Zach, if you'd read them off, I think that would help out quite a bit.
Thank you.
All of the underlying uses there?
The permitted uses and the special uses within the districts, or if you just want to share your screen and then go over and that'd probably be even better.
All right, let's see if we can do that. All right, is that working? Oh, there we go. Okay, hold on. Okay. So this is the C one commercial district with the permitted uses and the special uses. But pretty much everything. It's, uh, there's a lot of uses there.
What I'm understanding by looking at this, there's a lot of permitted uses, but there's a bunch of special uses, which I would think that we've got to approve the special use before anything can be done on it. Is that what I'm understanding?
Yeah, every special use comes to you guys.
And Zach, can you show them the other, the other use, overlay district uses and show them what you're omitting so they can get a visual of it, please?
You're saying for the marijuana district overlay?
Yeah.
All right, is that working for you guys?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. So this, this here, the, the marijuana overlay shows the special uses, as these three, you know, the marijuana provision centers, the retailers, and the micro businesses. If I'm going too fast, I mean, oh. So section 2004, this, this is the one we're referring to.
Yeah, 2004 is the one we're looking at specifically.
Yep.
And you're saying that it would just be omitted, there wouldn't be. Any language to replace it. Tonight.
Correct.
And, and it would obviously be renumbered to, to correctly reflect that, so.
But every, every one that wanted to come before us, would, it would be a special use, right, Mike?
It would be a special use if marijuana is involved in it, so. You know, and is, so if they, even if this applicant wanted to move forward. They have a current special use permit on there, this would be. Allowing an additional use that wasn't allowed when it was, it was a. It was permitted, so even in this case, I feel they should have to come forward, even though it would be a permitted use. From here on out, so if they would have came before us initially and requested that use. It would still become before you, because it's a, it's a marijuana-related use in that, in that district. And therefore. You know, you guys could put stipulations on it, however, if you were to ignore, or. They did not. Immediately come forward and say that they were, they were putting a mixed use on there, they could amend their permit later to do so as well, and still have to come before you guys, so. When we grant special uses. We have to be very careful, you know, if we want to. Add a stipulation in there that is a current permitted use. We need to make sure that we, we say, you know, that if this use is added at a later point, it needs to come back before you as an amendment, so.
So what we're saying is we're looking at this to be an amendment to their existing special use permit.
If, if they, they currently do not have that use. And if they would like it, they would, they would need to amend their, their special use permit to allow for it, even though it's a permitted use, it was not an allowable use. At the time of granting, so therefore they would, they would need to come back through.
Whenever there's a use change on a special use, it comes back as if it were a new special use permit, so it comes back to you guys.
If, if they want it, even though in this case it is a permitted use, if you were to remove it. So.
Because the special use permit doesn't, doesn't say that, the special use permit they have. On this, in this case, just says the marijuana provisioning center. So any other use changes requires them to come back to you to essentially. Allow for the permission of it.
Not, you know, you know, and, and. I would, I would be more comfortable with just ensuring that that is the case with George, so. Because when you, when you do change a use, it's usually. A special use that. It is the, the ordinance that's in effect at that time, so, but it is a good idea to run this by the city attorney, and just ensure that this is the case of that. You know, and if that requires. Tableing it to get that verification, that, that would be my request, or request to do so.
Okay. Okay, so you answered my question, Mike, thank you. So we did have a, we did have a motion. Approved by Shelley, second by Bob. Discussion. Now if we take a vote, Mike and Zach. It's turned down, can we, can we then retable, can we table it?
You could take other motions, so. Okay, you can, you can basically deny this, and then make, another person can make another motion.
Okay. So the motion, the second motion would be after the vote.
That's correct.
Okay, all right.
You know, a, as I look at this more, you know, again, I, I'm not sure. That we would be causing any great harm if we did. Strike it from the. The language, but wouldn't, this wouldn't be final today, correct? If we make a vote on it, then would this have to appear again? During the next meeting, or would this be final if we? Vote on it?
I, I'd have to check the bylaws on how the city, you, a lot of, the different entities do things differently, but.
Okay.
I'd verify it before the next meeting.
Yeah, this might have to go to the city before it's final, yeah.
That, that's what I was, that's what I wanted to verify.
Yeah.
I think it might have to go before city council.
The text amendment would have to go to, back to city council.
Okay.
I would feel comfortable with it being.
You know, I. I have, I'm, I'm not as concerned as I was. After giving it some thought, you know, again, God forbid that we would. Displace anybody from a decent home in Manistee.
Okay. Well, with that. Any other comments, discussion? None, please take a roll.
Can we, can we have the, the motion read back, please?
Approved with stipulations.
But no stipulations were made.
No.
Done, yeah.
No stipulations?
I, I couldn't hear you, Nancy, I'm sorry.
Could you say it again, Nancy, we couldn't hear you.
Couldn't hear you at all, Nancy.
Shelley made, uh, to approve it with stipulations, but at this point you have not made any stipulations to it.
Well, I, I think I may have confused about the stipulations, I was thinking that the stipulations would be. What Mike and Zach were talking about, like, upon approval of the attorney's language and. But it sounds like it moves through that process. Without those stipulations.
Text amendment language typically goes before the city attorney, however, I need to verify the bylaws on this, because. You guys might require additional readings, or to go to city council where other entities do not. I would also. You.
So, so I did speak with George about this. Before this, and. As I understood it from George, you know, omitting this. Still. As I said. Allows for the special use permit to, to be the final deciding factor on the marijuana. Business with the residents within it, near it, or in it. In this building.
Zach, was that to come through as an amendment? To the current special use permit, once you change this?
So I guess that's the clarification we would have to get from George, is that the special use permit coming back, the ones that are already. Is that, is that what you're asking me?
Right, so, because what you're doing is, you're essentially. You're making it a permitted use, where it's, it's currently not allowed, and they have a current special use permit on there, so. While it would add a use, it would then be.
For this case, yeah, it, it would, that would be something we want clarification from George on, I would say.
Why can't we just table this till we get verification from the attorney? And that, and then, then bring it back?
I think we could, I think we could deny the motion that I proposed.
We have to go through the motion, we have to vote on the motion. Shelley can actually withdraw her motion.
Yeah.
Yeah. I withdraw the, the motion.
She, she withdraws, yeah.
And then make a motion to table?
Yes.
After speaking with the city attorney and finding out, and checking the bylaws and stuff.
Okay. So the motion is to table.
Correct.
Correct?
Go for more information.
And Bobby.
Can, can you, can you tell me who made the motion, Mark? We, we need it for the minutes.
Shelley did.
Shelley.
No, I take that back, Mick did. Shelley, Shelley.
Withdrew.
Drew hers, and Mike, and Mike made the motion to table.
And a second?
Was Marlene.
Marlene, okay.
Yeah.
Discussion, or I mean, any more discussion on it?
No, I just think it's better to, to get more information. And that before we go forward with anything.
Okay. With that. Now please take a roll.
Commissioner Slawinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Samansky?
Yes.
Commissioner Mimberto?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Chair Whitlock?
Yes, thank you, so that, it will be tabled.
But as I understand, there won't be a requirement for another public hearing, or there will be?
Will not be.
Okay. Move along to old business.
Hey, Mark, we still got public comment in here anywhere, and other things?
Later on, yeah.
Later on yet, okay.
Right now we have public comments on old business, right?
Oh.
No.
It's just.
Old business, business.
There isn't any old business currently.
Zach, we have any old business?
I don't have any old business, no.
Okay, Mike?
Uh, not at this time.
All right, thank you. Public comments and communications. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment? Not necessarily on, on the agenda, but make a public comment, name and address, and you have up to three minutes.
So, so here, Mark. Here we've put some residents that are hoping to, to kind of canvass the committee on a. On a residential building in, in the C3 district. So, John here is, I, I would say let's have him go first, and you kind of canvass, and then we'll keep moving forward with the public comment.
Good evening, everyone, I'm Barbara Hammond, and this is my husband, John Hammond, and we live at 841. South Lake Shore Road in Fort Sand Lake, Michigan, which, if you don't know where that is, it's in the thumb. And my husband and I have been visiting the city of Manistee and the surrounding area for the past several years. And we've decided that it's the place where we would like to live. And so in walking around the neighborhoods in Manistee, we walked by the Hart Building, the former Michigan Bell Building. And at 427 Water Street. And we were able to, and it's for sale, obviously, and we were able to look inside the building with our realtor, Virginia Pelton. And looking at the interior of the building, it looked like it could be converted. Into a single-family home, which is what we would like to do. We've made an offer on the building, seller, and. We were just trying to get a feel from you all, whether or not. Using the adaptive reuse provision in the C3 ordinance. Might be. Open to us. In order to. Fulfill our dreams and, and make that building our home in Manistee. So we would buy the building as well as the adjoining lot. And the purpose would be to. You know, make the lot our green space at our home, and then preserve the historic character of that building.
Personally, I, I'll jump in there and say, I, I think it's, I think it's a great idea. You know, again, a little more than a block away, we have single-family homes where the Hotel Chippewa is. On the block forward, we just approved a. Senior and. Affordable housing. And we have affordable housing on the river as well, as part of another project, so. Continuing that onto the next corner, and actually you've got residents all the way up the street from you, those are all apartments. Going all the way up to the, to the top of Maple, from where you're at, so considering that that's the only. Building on the street, actually, with the exception of Kowalski's Auto. That isn't a former residence, I don't know why there would be a problem with it becoming a single residence. It would be a very unique place when you got finished with it, too, I'm, I'm thinking would be very unique, that is kind of a pretty neat building.
Thank you, Michael. Shelley?
Yeah, I agree, I think it's, it's, it's fun, it's, you know, anytime that, that we can encourage. Development. Particularly in the area that people like to visit, I think it's a great idea.
Marlene?
I think it's a great idea, also, I'd like to see that building, I think it would be easily converted into a, a home. And it would blend in well.
Thank you. Bob? Our resident celebrity?
Thanks. I'm on the fence, and I'm just gonna stay neutral on it right now.
Thank you. Pam?
This would be your, your permanent home? It's, it's not gonna be used as a rental or anything like that?
No, it would be our permanent home.
And I do wanna, I, I've moved over here from Fort Sand Lake, I lived over there for about 25 years, so.
Oh, did you?
Yeah, you'll enjoy it over here very much.
Thank you.
Um, I don't guess I have a problem with it. I, I know the building's been empty and for sale for, off and on for quite some time, and it'd be nice to have something done with it.
Thank you.
It is one of Manistee's more unique buildings.
It is.
Cool building. Always liked it, especially like the green space on the east side of the building. There's a lot that could be done with that.
Mark, if I can ask one question, I, I. I apologize, but. What, what about the parking issue on that property? There is absolutely no parking there for residential structure, which is a requirement of any residential structure.
They're buying the lot next door.
Can, can you put a driveway in there?
And can you put a garage?
Well, so. So the, so the idea would be to. Conjoin the two lots. And so it's my understanding if the two lots are conjoined, they're both treated, if in fact. The building was treated as. Residential under the adaptive reuse provision. Then the conjoined lot would be treated the same, and we'd be able to put our parking, you know, a garage. On that. Empty lot.
If, Zach, can you pull up the adaptive reuse just real quick, and I, I apologize, I just. My recollection of it is that it's for the building, but not necessarily accessory buildings. You know, where parking would be allowable, but not, maybe not necessarily a garage, and I, and I just want to ensure that we're all on the same page before. You know, we, we, we say that, hey, we don't have a problem with this, because if, if the adaptive reuse is only for the building, and then they, they apply for a land use permit for a garage, and we have to deny them. Based on the fact that it, it is, it is not an adaptive reuse of that building. That's the only issue I want to just make sure before we do that, guys.
They could still use it for parking.
That's correct, but a garage might not be necessarily allowable.
Because you have certain amount of coverage to a lot, then, don't you, Mike?
Yeah, there's a, there's, there's, but in the C3 district, I think it's like 100% coverage.
It's very high.
Yeah, it's, it's, they can basically fill the lot, I'm almost sure, in the C3 district, because of River Street and such, where the buildings fill the entire lot.
Isn't there any, is there a provision for curb cuts, anything that they have to go through?
Yeah, they have to get a driveway permit via the DPW, and they have to agree to it, that, that, and there is requirements within. That wouldn't have to be reviewed as well, so. That's why. Adding within a central business district, like a C3. adding within a central business district, like a C3, like driveways and residential areas, the, the C3 district, I just, I just wanna be upfront, it doesn't allow for residential housing as far as single-family homes, so adaptive reuse is a very particular thing, and before you say yea or nay, I, I, it, it does make sense to read it.
And remember, this is a, this is a canvassing.
I, I understand.
And, and Mike, is the garage is attached? Is it a separate building?
There is no garage here.
No, I know. They were talking about building a garage.
Right, but if it is, I just wanna review the adaptive reuse and see if it falls in line with it. If it does, then by all means, yes, attach it and, and go, go to town.
Well, it, but if I'm, if I understand, if they own both lots, they could use the adaptive use to create the residential part of their home, and then they could, they could apply for a building permit on the, on the vacant lot for a garage, correct? Without it necessarily being conjoined.
So the issue you're running into, this, this is not a use that is, is usually allowable within that district. So.
Well, it says residential for that.
For adaptive reuse, but Zach, pull up the C3 business district, please.
Yep.
Yeah, but it doesn't say anything about accessory buildings and the adaptive reuse, though.
Right.
Did say something about expansion, though, in there. In that last.
This is the district in which it resides, your central business district. Dwelling accessory is allowed in there, so.
Yep.
But, single-family homes are not, so that's, that's why they're using the adaptive reuse.
Right.
But no other, so if, if this, this fits into the adaptive reuse, I just wanna make sure that we understand what exactly we are, we are saying we, we agree to, or we're, we're open to not agree to anything, but.
Right. They could always build the contractor's facility.
That would work.
Yeah.
Or Marina, you think you can build a tunnel, maybe, or?
Oh, yeah, they said, we're, this is just a canvassing to see how we feel about it.
Yeah.
So I, I, I would think that, you know, there would, I, I think they, it's got some real merit.
Roger, what do you think? You have to unmute, there you go.
Yes, well, I'll tell you what, I think, I think it's something to consider, but my feelings are for it, being it is commercial, being that there's no parking, and if they turn around and put a garage, then they don't have the green space, as I understand it. So it's something to look at. To tell you the truth, it's something to look at, so that's how I feel.
If, if I could provide some information, sir, the vacant lot is about 100 feet wide, I believe. Normal residential two-story garages are approximately 20, 25 foot square. A substantial part, I think, at least 66 to 70% of the lot would still remain open green space. There is also off-street parking currently with the building. There is space between the Michigan Bell switch building, which is further up Oak, I believe.
Yeah.
The, the south elevation of the Bell Building that would allow off-street parking for cars, but this is just informational. And again, we're just canvassing to, to, because we would, of course, then go work with the, the building department, specifically Zach, and putting together the application that would have to meet their approval before, it was again brought before you, your committee for consideration. And as, as Zach said earlier, we all, we appreciate you, everybody taking time this evening to give their thoughts and feelings. There may be some things that still need to be worked out, and we're cognizant of that, but, you know, we just wanted to make sure that as we move forward with the special application process, that there was a possibility for future consideration.
Right, right. Understand, it's a good move. I wouldn't buy the building planning on turning it into a single-family right now until we're done, but it's a good move. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Is there any other questions that we could answer for the committee? Any other questions?
Have you, have you currently made an offer on the, on the property?
Yes, we have.
That's correct. John Baroka is the property owner. He's at the lawyer, I think, in your community. He has an offer in his hand, and part of the offer is contingent on us moving forward with the adaptive reuse and the acceptance of that adaptive reuse.
Okay, great, thank you.
That's all.
Bob, you having any questions?
Nothing I can think off the top of my head, and without me driving by to take a look out there and see what topography and stuff, straight, jump out at me.
Yeah, I just, I just walked by just yesterday and looked at, now the lot itself, you know, it's, it's, it's kinda hilly, it's not a, it's not a, it would have to have some real major landscaping done and some retaining walls and things, so.
Yeah.
But it, but it's doable, definitely doable.
Right, I mean, there's a large expense to prepare that lot properly to allow any, anything on it, but that's part of our budget area process, and, you know, so you're, you're correct, Mike, it's, it's, it's a
slope there, and I'm assuming that's why it's not been developed to this point, so.
Right, and and also, in talking about the, the use of the, the vacant lot, the parking structure, I think, would be placed in such a way as to minimize it over the elevation, which, of course, would put it towards the, what I believe is the west end of the lot. Towards the, the multifamily units, I'm sorry, the east end of the lot, I apologize, where there's currently a multi-family dwelling. There might, I think there's, I'm not exactly sure, 18 units there.
Yep, it used to be a hospital, from what I understand.
Is that what that was?
Wow, okay. When the rest of the lot, then, between that and the, the home would be garden, I love the garden, so.
Great.
That garden.
I'd be curious to see what Bob thinks, since he is the expert in, in surveying, and, and so.
Yeah, like I said, I'd like to take a look, go take a look at the property, see what the possibilities are. Just by looking, I can look at the topography of the area and see what looks feasible.
Yep.
Okay, well, if the council doesn't have any more questions, thank you very much for allowing Barbara and I to meet with you this evening. Hopefully, in the near future, we'll be meeting again for your consideration of our special use application for adaptive reuse of 427 Water Street.
I do have one other question. Now, the, the green space on the east end, is that kind of, you said it's 100 feet wide?
I paced it off, I believe, from the, the retaining wall that is just to the east of the Hart Building. It was 90 to 100 feet to the fence line of the old hospital that I just was made aware of.
So there's a, it seems like there's a bunch of, there is jogs in the lot line?
Well, part of the, part of the, the offer to the Harts is that, I'm sorry, to the Brokers, John, is that he do a corner survey of that lot? So, does that answer your question, Mark, or did I?
Well, no, I mean, I'm just looking, I'm looking at Google Earth right now, and have you have, they have the building just east of, of the, of the retaining wall, it looks like? And then there's certain, there's jogs that go back to the old hospital, so is that the lot, lot?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a, there's an old foundation wall. There was a previous structure there at one time. I'm not, I, I don't have the history of the lot, but some of that concrete still remains, and that's what's adding to the, the, the elevation change that's on the lot, and that would be part of the development that would have to be addressed.
You don't happen to know what subdivision that's in right now, would you?
I, I only had the, the plat number, so if there's a specific name to that subdivision, I'm not aware of it.
And you, what, did you have that number handy?
I'm sorry?
You have that number handy?
Just a moment. It'll take me a minute to get it, but I can give it to you. Um, let me just. That's on the, it's in the offer, it's on the offer. Just a minute, please. Bring the clipboard over.
Is it the Hart Building? Is that the one you said it was?
That's the one at the corner, and then there's a lot in between that and the apartment building. And it's, it, it's got a park bench in it right now. It's kind of just a, a very unusual, overgrown area.
And, and did I hear that it's the Hart Building that they wanna turn into a home?
Yeah, the Hart Building.
Okay.
So I have two numbers for you.
Okay.
Robert, Bob, so one is 51-51349706-9, and the other parcel is the same number, except it ends in 08. And I can't remember which is the vacant and which is the, the current structure.
One, one would be a lot nine, the other one's a lot eight, I'm pretty sure of it. It's just, I'd have to figure out.
Is it filler and Tyson's?
Tyler Tyson, okay. That's exactly what I needed.
Is that what you were looking for?
Yeah.
Yep. I have my folder with all my subdivisions in here.
Always prepared.
And it's sitting at my work desk, what do you expect?
I guess I'd never, well, never had an opportunity to walk the property, so I guess I need to walk through some yards. Now, are you gonna keep the trees?
Well, when we rebalance the lot, some of the larger trees would be eliminated. There's also garbage trees growing along the south fence line that would probably be addressed. The, the lot hasn't been maintained, it looks, in quite a while, so most of the, most of the vegetation is, I guess I would call it garbage trees.
But then we would plant new trees, more understory type trees, you know, smaller trees.
They look quite large.
Red buds, you know, similar to that. There's a row of cedars that is direct on the very far east side of that lot that I think we would retain a little bit as a green shade between the old hospital and our space. But, you know, again, that's all to be addressed. I'm sure we would have to involve one of the companies in the community to, you know, design and develop that properly. I believe a retaining wall is in order to hold back the, the Michigan Bell Building, which is directly to the south. There is currently retaining walls and fences there. And if you walked a lot, I think it would be self-explanatory.
Okay, I've got it here. The, the lot where the building is on is 93 feet wide, and the lot next door is 93 feet wide.
Thank you, sir.
And you have a depth of approximately, well, you wouldn't, you only got part of that lot because of the Bell Building. But your, sounds like you got part of lots three and four, block seven. That's what it sounds, it looks like here on the map.
Development of an off-street parking facility would, would probably incorporate 25% of the lot, leaving 75% open for not only our enjoyment, but the enjoyment of the community.
All right.
We, we do have somebody waiting to speak in public comment, Mer.
All right. So this was just a canvas to get an idea where, where they, where we stand, correct?
That's correct. In, in the future, we'll make it an agenda item, Mark, so that they, it, it's probably shouldn't go under public comment, but we'll, we'll get that knocked out next time, so.
Okay. So with, with this, then I know we can't vote, but it sounded like everybody is for this. I take. So.
Yeah, supportive anyways.
So, moving along, and there's still some avenues to cross, then, correct, Mike?
Yeah, I mean, they would have to come through with all the requirements on the adaptive reuse, as well as there's some hurdles with the, obviously, combining with subdivision plat. That can be a major hurdle. So yeah, I mean, there's some definite hurdles to go through, so we'll see what happens, so. Once we get a, a plan and they've met the requirements, it will come back before you guys, if they, if they choose to proceed with it.
All right, okay. Well, I'd say is, is good luck. Thank you. And is, is that it?
No, you have, you have a person that's been waiting.
I know, I know, on the hand. So. Okay. Anyone else? Name and address, please. They have up to three minutes.
Yeah, hi, this is Willie McKenzie from Authentic 2314985 Maple Road, Manistee.
Okay.
I apologize for being late. I was, I'm traveling today. I did get on to to hear the motion and the discussion there at the end. I understand the concerns involving mixing marijuana and residence, but I would just plead with you guys. I'm sure you know that it is difficult to find housing in Manistee. I currently employ 24 people, 98% of whom are from the community. We've had to bring in a couple people from outside in management roles. And we have been working to find housing since September, and, and it's just been such a struggle. And here we have a very nice, well-done unit. It's safe. And it would just be like a really ideal place for her, for Diane to live. And, I mean, I guess I, you know, I guess I'm, I'm pleading, really, is what I'm trying to do here. We really need that place for, so if there's any way that we can make it work, we're willing to do whatever you guys want. We will, you know, whatever stipulations you may have, it would be a residence only for her. It's not open to the public. We'll provide pay stubs, regular check-ins. You can inspect the unit if you want. We're willing to do whatever it takes to, to make that unit happen for her. It's just, it's really important, you know, she's unfortunately, right now, living in a vacation rental. I, I'm sure she told you that. And that vacation rental is, is up here soon, right, because it's about to be tourist season again. And I'm trying to bring more jobs and, and more money to Manistee, myself included. And it's just really hard to find housing. I have spoken with Zach. Zach provided me with, with the the housing study that was done, and I have spoken to him about potentially doing some affordable housing work in the future, which I think is a great idea and something that I'm interested in doing on the development side of things. But for right now, like, this one apartment really would make a huge difference for us, so you know, if there's any way that you guys could see to it, to, to allow this for us, I would really appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay. Move along. Staff reports.
Only thing I have here, Roger, I know you reached out to me, I think it was yesterday, it's, it's hard for me to remember what day is which anymore. But you reached out to me about occupancy for the hotels, and I did reach out to Mark Miller on that. He said he's gonna hunt it down, and, and we're gonna figure, find something for you, so. Occupancies for current hotels is being looked at for you, Roger.
Thank you.
Outside of that, I don't have anything. Mike, do you have anything?
How the occupancies and what?
This is correspondence we should probably do as well as Zach, so let's read it in now.
Oh, did we skip right over correspondence?
We did, but that's fine. If you want, I'll start.
Good, good try, Mark. I missed it, so my fault.
All right, so I'll start it out. To whom it may concern, this letter is regarding the sale of Lake Shore Motel to Hampton Inn. I'm a Manistee County resident and branch manager of PNC Bank in the downtown Manistee. The feedback I get from the community, excuse me, community, myself included, is excitement about this purchase. Manistee would benefit in many ways with this hotel. I have conversed with several community members who are interested in hosting their, their slash, a family member's wedding in their hometown of Manistee, but have many troubles with finding the accommodations. This would provide a beautiful solution. This brings many more tourists and friends slash families of locals to the heart of Manistee. The location and size of the hotel isn't too big or too small. Pairing this with the literal, um, or RL, it's LRBOI, is putting at the end of River Street is a wonderful idea. Also, the economics of Manistee are primarily driven by tourism, which this sale would promote. This letter is to express the approval and acceptance of Hampton Inn. Please feel free to reach out with, to me with any questions. Thank you for reading Chelsea Harvey, Manistee County resident and business manager.
Attention Planning Commission. Dear City of Manistee, hi, my name is Jason McBreth. I have been staying at the Lake Shore Motel for twelve years or so and out, and I feel that it is time for a new upgraded motel to be built. This will help Paul and Darcy out as, as it will, is getting harder for them to run the place and maintain it. I see more positives than negatives to the Lake Shore Motel project if they do sell it to the builder for the new one to be built. Thanks for the hard work you guys do to the city. Hopefully the next years are as good, are good ones. Jason, Jason McBreth.
I'm writing to express my concern over the proposed five-story hotel at Manistee Beach. While I believe that there is a need, there needs to be development, I think a three-story hotel would be adequate and more in keeping with the surroundings. Yours sincerely, Sally Some Self.
Hello, I am writing about the potential development of a hotel by Hampton Inn near First Street Beach. While not opposed to a hotel being on the site currently occupied by a hotel, I do believe careful consideration needs to be taken on the kind of hotel, as well as the appearance of the hotel. A smaller, perhaps, three-story structure that blends in, in more with the surrounding area could certainly be an asset to Manistee. However, a large structure with neon signage that can be seen from far away and black views to the water could ruin the beauty and quite, and quaintness of this area. My husband and I are, are new Manistee residents, and one of the reasons we chose Manistee was its small-town charm. I believe I, I believe a large cookie cutter chain hotel could damage this charm. I repeat that we are not against a hotel on this site, but a smaller boutique hotel seems more suitable and appropriate for this area. I have attached pictures of a new hotel development in Charlevois, Michigan. As you can see, it still has the, it still has some size, but has more appealing architecture and blends in with the surroundings. We ask that you consider the alternatives for this site that fit with the beauty of Manistee. Thank you for your time. Regards, Rebecca Grasset.
Hello, although we are basically in favor of a new hotel, we have major concerns about the project. A five-story building is way out of proportion for the site zone like residential, and although the purchasers are using a PUD, no thought has been given to the natural surroundings there overpowering the dunes and beach, counting down of trees and buffer condos and residences. The huge amount of light that will be given off destroying the night sky and disrupting the surrounding neighborhood's residential atmosphere. Two to three stories should be the maximum allowed there, automatically making the parking issue go away. In the past, even a two-to-three-story hotel was rejected by the city. Number two, allowing parking in the, the city lot across the street with curb cuts will be dangerous walk-across for children and adults alike. It is also currently against the law for overnight parking there. Special city events like the Fourth of July carnival and tight lines for troops could be negatively affected. Number three, with the proposed large hotel slash convention center at River and Cypress Streets, is there really a need for a hundred-plus additional rooms in Manistee? Have any studies been done to analyze the room capacity for the area so all existing hotel slash motel owners can survive? Winners now cause the Lake Shore Motels to close for three to four months with its small capacity. How will this huge hotel survive with the, with all these additional rooms? Number four, residential streets like First and Cherry will have a negative impact for the current city residents as heavy construction traffic, and later the increase in hotel increases noise and congestion. Number five, job creation is important, but the majority of them will probably be part-time seasonal and minimum wage at best. Number six, the park area to the south will probably see huge increases in use and the need for improved city services through the DPW to handle the cleanup and maintenance, um, should be considered. Number seven, water slash fire issues are a problem and will cost the Manistee taxpayers money to resolve them. We should not have to subsidize them. For all these reasons, overdevelopment on that site would destroy the wonderful nature, pure Michigan, Manistee appeal that currently is there. It has been suggested that the site should become an additional park space to make it more in tune with the surrounding area. Grants from the state and other entities can be applied for to pay for the Lake Shore Motel price for the property and restore the area to natural habitat that all could enjoy for generations to come. This is a tremendous opportunity to accomplish this. We hope the extreme caution and much deliberation will be taken to make sure the right thing happens there that benefits the citizens of Manistee, property owners, and all future generations. Overdevelopment on its precious lakeshore ruins Manistee. Most sincerely, Dale and Jennifer Teller, Harbor Drive, Manistee.
Mark, the future is now, and how we react to it is critical. Manistee residents have, Manistee residents have long been resistant to change, thinking high-paying redundancy jobs would return to the area. It is wishful thinking, and it would be great if it were to happen, but reality is, it is not just going to happen. The Hampton Inn will not only provide jobs, but boost the area at large will be significant. All of the needed support functions and sales will, will provide a great economic impact on the community at large. I understand the objection that many people have, but I don't see the problem with the prospective location. If we're down the beach, if it were down on the beach, I would definitely, I would think differently, but I don't have any problem with the location. From what I've seen, the objections are unfounded and the positive impacts outweigh the negatives. Sincerely, Charles Patton.
Dear Mark Whitliff, a Hampton Inn on the beach in Manistee is a win-win in so many ways. We stay exclusively in Hampton Inns when we travel several times a year. They are great and very popular. We make our reservation weeks before we, we make our reservations weeks before we depart. Also, we would love to have the option of having our out-of-town guests and families stay in a Hampton Inn on Lake Michigan. There are many Manistee area people that own property in warmer climates, and they would also have a great option for a nice place to stay when returning to Manistee to visit family and friends. Also, not everyone wants a short-term rental home requiring a one-week stay. The Hampton would offer a great opportunity for a weekend getaway and more. I think most of us, us know what all the positives are for the city and surrounding area. There is no such thing as marking time. Either our city is moving forward or it is stagnant. This is not a pretty picture for our future. The Hampton Inn proposal would be a major step in the right direction for the city slash area. When one looks at what's been developed, most of it has been outside of the city limits to date. Most of what some people are objecting to has no merit. City of Manistee is equipped to manage the heavy traffic, security and logistics during many annual events and festivals that happen here. A Hampton Inn wouldn't even come close to generating that type of activity. It should, it would be a shame to miss an opportunity. We hope and pray the city leaders give this proposal a fighting chance. Very sincerely, Roger and Sharon Hocken-Dobbler. I might have butchered that last thing.
Dear members of the Planning Commission, we write in support of the application for the construction of a new hotel on the site where the Lake Shore Motel currently sits. We'd also like to thank the city for their time and effort that has already been invested in this project. The Lake Shore Motel was built in the nineteen fifties. It's been a constant fixture for, fixture of the city for the past seventy years. We are the current owners and have been operating the motel since nineteen seventy-nine. This property is our retirement. We have worked forty-plus long, hard years and have earned this. It isn't right to threaten to take away that security from us for trivial reasons. During our tenure, we have always tried to be good neighbors and good citizens. Manistee is our home, too. Health issues, unforeseen events, and other motivating factors have helped us in our decision to list the property for sale. We are happy and fortunate that some highly regarded developers with a Manistee connection have placed a bid on the property. We have agreed to sell the property, but the agreement is contingent on the buyer securing permission from the city to construct a new building. If permission is not granted, we will reopen again in the spring as we always have done. It has been brought to our attention that people have concerns. That is understandable. And while we cannot anticipate all the issues that others might voice, we hope you'll let us express our views as well as our views is on those issues that we have heard. Many of the points we have tried to make in this letter are perhaps unnecessary because they are so obvious. And if that is the case, please forgive us. Economic benefits in the project include a substantial increase in tax revenue. The programs and services that the residents desire, from youth programs to senior services to public safety, all cost money to implement and run. A large hotel will employ more people. We have a, we have, we have heard the complaint, the complaint that many jobs in the hotel industry are just part-time. Is no job preferable to a part-time job? We don't know the hiring practices of the buyers, but it is true with, but it is true with us that we would, that we mostly hire part-time help. That's what we needed, and fortunately, some people want part-time work. If someone required full-time employment when we couldn't offer it, then naturally they would have worked somewhere else. Lake Shore Motel and Hotel here proposed may actually be a little different than many others in this way. Motels along the highway are more often used as a place to stop on the way to their destination. This propel, this proposed hotel adjacent to the beach will, we believe, be much more likely to be the destination. That is significant because guests will often be coming for a vacation or a long weekend getaway. Those are the kind of visitors that are likely to find time to visit downtown and patronize our local businesses. Restaurants, shops, golf courses, museums, fishing charters, and marinas will all benefit. Those business, those businesses in turn hire employees, pay taxes, and so on. This is called the multiplier effect by economics, economists. And a side note we cannot resist, is ironic that some of the same people who say that we are concerned about downtown businesses closing are oft, also often opposed to the very sorts of things that would make the downtown more vibrant. And also, they're, they are probably those same people that didn't want the condos, the prison, the casino, and Meyer, where they now live, work, play, and shop at. Of course, while economic benefits matter, economics are not the only thing and perhaps not even the most important thing. All of us want to live in a safe and attractive environment. But we have to be cautious when we make judgments solely on aesthetic considerations. Tastes vary, and beauty is often in the eye of the holder. Many of the arguments against the propose, the proposal seem to be in, seem to be that the critique is, in one way or another, is just doesn't like the look or feel of the hotel by the beach. Perhaps they want another park or playground, or maybe just a vacant lot. That is a legitimate desire, and if they had purchased the property, they could have been, they could have pursued that vision. But it's not the choice presented in the Planning Commission. This choice, the, the choice is not motel versus no hotel. No motel. The choice is between the current motel and the proposed one. Private citizens at their own expense propose to replace a two-story cinder block structure with a new hotel built to modern specifications, including an indoor pool, indoor-outdoor spa, and a beach bar with fire pits. Should that be permitted? On the issues of aesthetics, the proposed design and brand is consistent with high-quality attractive hotels and resorts built all over the nation. Some have voiced concerns that their view will be impaired. Note that there has been, that there has been a motel on this property since the nineteen fifties. Also note that the proposed hotel will not be any higher than what the tree can be, is that exists today. The obstruction is both the old and the new. Would be, both the old and the new would be the same. So the consensus must be that the current motel is more attractive than that which is proposed. Again, beauty is in the eye of the holder. Some have complained that the structure is not Victorian style. By the way, neither is the current motel. The property is not downtown, nor even near the Victorian district. It just isn't. We all know many other businesses and structures, including government structures, are not Victorian in style either. But finally, the proposed, the proposed, the purpose of the Victorian-style emphasis is to attract visitors to our fair town. What is the purpose, what is, what is proposed is a business that would serve exactly the same person, purpose, bring in visitors. On that point, some seem to have concerns with the addition of hotel rooms that the beach will be, become too busy and popular. Yogi Berra once remarked about a New York City restaurant, no one goes there, it's too popular. We can anticipate that the beach would be, would indeed have more use. At least that is our hope. That's what beaches are for. It makes no sense to advocate for public parks and discourage the use of those public spaces. If someone's employment of the beauty, enjoyment of the beauty of the beach is diminished by the knowledge that other people enjoy it too, well, let's just say some, say there is something wrong with that person. Many of the criticisms fall under a broad category of a hotel is not what we need. Some say we need boutique motels, whatever that is. Others favor condominium development. Some say they worry that the hotel won't be successful, and presumably they, they very kindly don't want others to stumble into a bad investment. No doubt, other imaginative, imaginative people can offer additional ideas about what other people ought to do with their money and their property. All of that is well and good, but then they go and, go on and try to enlist the government to enforce their wills. They want the government to protect them from having to see a hotel when they open their eyes. Or from having a tolerant, having to tolerate the existence of other people on the beach. We suggest it is not a function of the government to manage the aspirations and industry of others. What is on the table is no pipe dream. Serious and successful people who believe in the future of Manistee are proposing a beautiful and well-built, well-appointed facility. Undoubtedly, they hope to make it successful, a successful enterprise, and because they are, are in business, they know, they are in the business, they know the way that they need to do it. That is to o, offer a service that other people want. They want, they want what all of us want, to build the healthy prosperity of a town. If Manistee turns away from these high-quality developers who are proposing a beautiful addition to our community, will there be other projects to take their place? Or will others learn that Manistee is not a place to do business? If this project isn't good enough, then what will be? Finally, if improving and upgrading a motel is not the best and highest use of this property, consistent with the ownership rights of private citizens, then what is? A new hotel will be the same kind of business that has been seen on that parcel for decades. The same, but better. This hope, this proposed hotel is perfectly consistent with the efforts of the city has made for years to attract visitors, and we hope it will be approved. Paul Stewart, Darcy Stewart.
Is that the, uh, end of the correspondence?
Um, that's the end for me. Are you done, Mike?
Yeah, I don't have anymore.
Okay, all right. Move along, thank you for reading those. Uh, go to staff reports.
So I guess I'll, I'll reiterate again, this time, um, Roger, I did reach out to Mark Whitliff, wherever Roger is, um, about the occupancy of the current hotels, and, uh, he said he's gonna get back to us on that. And outside of that, I don't have any more, anything else to report.
Oh, the occupancy on one.
I'm sorry, what was that?
So I know the occupancy on one.
That was Mark Miller you reached out to, though, right?
Yeah, correct.
Okay. Mike?
I don't have anything at this time, guys. I appreciate you. It's a longer view than I thought it was gonna be, so I appreciate you.
All right, Nancy, you have anything?
No, I do not.
Thank you. Okay, member discussion. Pam?
Yeah, after this hotel thing is over with, can we, um, make a motion not to have to read all the correspondence? And just have it sent to us? Would that be, because I, I don't think it happens in any other commissions or anything.
It doesn't.
Right, so we, we had asked that question, um, initially, uh, prior to this, when we started getting them, and the city attorney felt that, uh, we should continue with reading them until after this project, but... But that is something that Zach and I have definitely discussed. No other communities really do this. They just put it in as part of their packet. I don't know how we started doing this, but
So maybe we can make a motion saying, and starting January 1st, 2022, we don't do this anymore.
Well, you can always modify the bylaws.
We can do that too, yeah.
Just put it on the outline packet.
And then, uh,
There is one thing, there's a, there was a letter from Rebecca, I think, Grassil. She said she had pictures of Charlevoix project. Could you send me those? I'd like to see the pictures of the Charlevoix hotel.
I was thinking the same thing.
Yeah, send them to all of us.
I did, for the one thing, Mark, and I did want to comment on it was the, we did reach out to the city attorney about hosting at the Ramsdale as a hybrid meeting. And Zach, can you, what was the?
So, so the consensus with that is that because city council is not doing any sort of hybrid or, or any sort of in-person meetings, they felt that the rest of the commissions and boards should follow suit. So where they're going to continue going from, from the Zoom platform.
So next.
The only, interesting. The only suggestion that I would make is that perhaps when we have the meeting with the, this property, we may want to go back to city council or to the lawyer and have it be a, something at the Ramsdale. I, I can, I can see them not wanting it for the general meeting since, since the, the council isn't meeting in person either. But for something that you're going to have as much attendance for, I, I think that might be a game changer for, for the city to be able to approve having it at the Ramsdale.
Oh, my, Mick, we, that is a question we posted. So for the next meeting, we requested that we could utilize the Ramsdale, and we were, we were told what we just commented on.
Really? Oh.
So if you, if you feel differently, I, maybe a discussion could be had.
Yeah, let, 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 let me talk to Thad and just see what he thinks and because I, you know, again, if, since we, you know, have had probably four hours worth of, of reading letters in the last three months. Either that or we're going to have to, you know, split it up into two or three days.
So I know there is an issue with the Ramsdale and microphones as well as.
Oh, that's, that, that's true. I forgot about that.
City could coordinate with your technology people and get something set up.
Well, you know, the other option is the Wagner Center.
I, I, we, we can attempt to do whatever you guys wish, but with that, there, you know, we were hesitant to ask for the Wagner Center with the pandemic and seniors and closed spaces, so we can request it, but I, I will leave if that is your guys' desire for us to do so. So, I mean, maybe a conversation could be had in coordinated, you know, via the city and, and, because I don't know if the, if the Wagner Center would have the appropriate equipment as well to, to host an event like that, but for the space, I, I really don't know. I think it's only 25% if they, you know, I don't know how many people are going to come out, guys. It might not be adverber for a large portion of people to come out.
Well, the Wagner Center is large.
How many does it hold?
Are the pews still there, Mike?
No, no. It's a big open space. It, it probably, even with the restrictions, probably 150.
What about auditorium at the high school?
That is still under, that's under tight call, control.
Than the Wagner Center.
Okay.
Yeah, the schools can't do a lot in the auditoriums right now either.
And, and they have nothing going on in the evening, so it's not like you would be interfering with an exist program. There's nothing at 7:00.
Right, but it still goes back to if it's a hybrid, so let's say it holds 150 and 160 people show up.
Oh, no, it, well.
You know what I'm saying, like? And we turn people away, we're going to be, we need to have a way to, or let's say somebody says, I'm uncomfortable with coming and because of the pandemic or whatever it may be. We wanted to do a hybrid system, but that still needs to be coordinated. And we do not have the IT capabilities of orchestrating that for you guys.
I don't think Zoom has the capability of doing 150 people either.
No, but, but you could do public comment. And you guys could have, you know, a computer with a camera hooked up that basically have your guys' conversation with microphones. I mean, there is a way to do it, but, you know, that is not the county does not have the appropriate ways of doing that, guys.
Okay.
I mean, but if the city does, and you guys have like outdoor speakers with microphones, and, you know, we, we could Zoom, you know, potentially, yes, but it, it, it is, I mean, you got it, it's got to be coordinated. I, I, as much as anybody, do not want to have this meeting over Zoom, so.
Maybe we'll have to have it at Sabre Stadium.
Sabre Stadium, outdoors, huh? So, um, but yeah, I mean, if it is something that you want to check up on, by all means, I, I just, we're just, we did check into it, we were told fall, fall, follow the city council.
Yeah, I, I forgot all about the renovations of the, the sound system, so.
Yeah, I could call Thad in the morning too. So, see where that goes. Or we have it outside at Chippewa Field.
Yeah.
Might be a little cold, but you know, that's okay.
Yeah. It'll make it go faster.
What are you saying, Bob?
We're going to get that wet stuff again. Frozen or wet, frozen or thawed.
I thought you meant other stuff, so never mind.
Okay.
Okay. All right, Shelley, Pam, you're done, correct?
I'm done, yeah, definitely. Game starts in an hour, yeah, I'm done.
Okay. Nothing, Shelley? The captain, Roger?
You're muted, Roger.
We can read lips, so he says he's done.
Yes, thank you for that. No, I have nothing, Mark. You're doing a fine job, kid.
Who's winning the game?
I can't tell you that. I'm not watching it.
Okay, all right. Arlene?
I just wanted to say, if you drive down River Street and you look over at Century Terrace, that's about the size of the building of the hotel. And they're only going to hire around 30-some people. And I researched and there's not one hotel on Lake Michigan far north of us all the way down. And I'm not opposed to a hotel, but I just think the size is just way too much and the parking. And I know I use the beach a lot in the summer with my kids and grandkids. And you circle and circle now for a parking place. It not only would be worse if we allow a five-story unit in there with over 100 rooms.
Okay, thank you. Mick?
Well, I, I have to say that I think that this is a great project. I can tell you, I've lived away from Manistee for 40 years. And I would come back and stay at the Lake Shore Hotel. And I will tell you, every single time I stayed at that hotel, I thought to myself and talked to my wife and said, man, if I had the money, I would buy this. I would build a huge hotel on this spot. And somebody finally had the money and the gumption to go ahead and do. But it's, it was something that I dreamed about for, for years and years. So I, I'm really looking forward to having a world-class hotel in Manistee and really utilize a, a unique piece of property that, that again, as Ms. McBride said, there's not really any other places like it in, on our coast. So I, I think it's a very unique opportunity for us.
Okay. Bob, the resident celebrity?
Okay, yeah, anyway. They got really a lot, but I think I'll, does, what were you and I talked about earlier this week, Zach? I'm going to get you some more information on those containment areas and different types, so maybe that'll be something we put down the road. So I'm going to dig up all the information and get from M.D. and everything else for that. So that'll give us something to work with.
I don't have anything, but thank everyone for a two-hour meeting tonight, so we're, just get prepped for what's coming.
Still warm up.
Can, when you do the agenda, can you, can you time in some bathroom breaks in between?
Yeah, we'll just take it to nine. All right, well, with that, Tim. Make a, a motion to adjourn.
I think it's unanimous.
I'm unanimous, yes. Okay, well, good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night, mom.